Good morning. We're gonna get started now. I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call up the roll to take attendance and members that are attendance will please indicate by saying present and a word or two to make sure that your photo is displayed. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. Good morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President and colleagues and the public.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, I'm present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues and good morning Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, looking forward for another session of councils today.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning colleagues, I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Morning, Council President and good morning colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, my heart and prayers goes out to the family of Walter Wallace Jr.
Morning.
Councilman Jones.
Morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues, good morning city, offering a prayer for our city.
Morning, Council.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Council.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President and my colleagues.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Scola.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues.
Morning, Council.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues.
Morning, Council.
Council President Clark.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. We just established our forum. So despite the great need, there will be no invocation today. We will, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and our citizens, and the Wallace family, and the community of which that tragic event happened. We will now observe a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much. Thank you, appreciate it. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 22, 2020, and the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 22, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it is moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 22, 2020 stand approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, aye's have it and our journal is approved, and our next order of business is request for leave of absence and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentle lady, and our next order of business is communications, and Mr. Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on October 26, 2020, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on October 15, 2020, bill numbers 200349, 200374, and 200424.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very, thank you very much in advance for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Parker offers four bills and one resolution. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electives of the City of Philadelphia, of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter, providing for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of an independent economic opportunity plan oversight board, and providing for annual appropriations to the board. And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by amending chapters 17, 100, entitled Procurement Contracts to add disclosure requirements related to prior contracting experience and the demographic characteristics of employees and board members of contractors and subcontractors for city contracts for competitively bid goods. And an ordinance amending chapter 17, 100, entitled Procurement Contracts by adding requirements related to the provisions of information regarding the demographic characteristics of employees of and the labor force used by city contractors and subcontractors and the performance of work under certain city contracts for competitively bid services. And an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by amending chapters 17, 100, entitled Procurement Contracts and chapter 17, 1400, entitled non competitively bid contracts, financial assistance, to add disclosure requirements related to prior contracting experience and the demographic characteristics of employees, other sources of labor, and board members of contractors and subcontractors for city contracts and public works.
They will be referred to committee.
Councilwoman Parker also offers one resolution on behalf of Council President Clark entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of an independent economic opportunity plan oversight board and to provide for annual appropriations for the board.
And that will be referred to committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill entitled and ordinance amending section nine, 212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled newsstands by expanding the allowable items newsstands can sell and offer.
For the committee.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and two resolutions entitled and ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wissahican Avenue, Hunting Park Avenue, Fox Street, and Roberts Avenue.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And two resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia native Kristen Walker for her outstanding poise and professional performance as moderator of the second and final 2020 presidential debate.
Councilman, you wanted to be recognized after both resolutions, Councilman Jones?
Um, I think there is another.
Okay, you want to wait till the second, okay. Mr. Decker.
And a resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department and the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services to increase reliance on trained behavioral health providers when responding to 911 calls in order to properly identify when individuals are experiencing mental or emotional distress.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to, for the record, state that Councilwoman Bass, um, they say, I don't know about great minds, but minds that are heavy with what's going on in our city think alike, and we reached out, uh, and she reached out to us, and we decided that our mutual committees, Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Health and Human Services, to take a look at from training to 911 calls, to the least actions on the street, taking a look at how we.
You're awake now? You're feeling a little more awake now?
How to deal with mental health issues on our streets. Police officers aren't always trained to know the signs of mental health. I remember many members of council have worked with behavioral health to look at for our own purposes, dealing with constituent services, how to recognize signs when people are experiencing distress. So what we want to do is take a look at all of the steps from training to the 911 calls to boots on the ground on the street, on how we can encourage graduated understanding of mental health crisis and then interaction with suspects who are presumed innocent until proven guilty and not sentenced at the point of arrest. So I'm looking forward to working with the two committees and thankful for Councilmember Bass's interest in this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, the first resolution will be on next week's calendar, the just referenced resolution will be on today's calendar. Mr. Decker, we're asking for a hearing over that, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I saw that look on your face, sir.
Actually, no, Mr. President.
I got my check on Mr. Decker.
Actually, it's not calling for a hearing, Mr. President, that resolution is calling on the Philadelphia Police Department to.
All right.
To do some things, so it's a demanding calling.
Okay, I just saw, I saw your face.
So there will be a hearing.
Okay, I know you, I talked to you earlier and I thought we were going, okay. Thank you, that'll be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers six bills. Entitled an ordinance amending chapter 10, 2000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of Three-Dimensional Printer to Manufacture Firearms, to change the chapter title to add definitions, to add additional prohibitions on use of three-dimensional printers, to impose prohibitions related to the transfer, use, or conversion of unfinished firearms and certain equipment, the manufacture of firearms, and to prescribe additional penalties for violations of this chapter. And an ordinance amending chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia Zoning Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating a new subsection entitled Multimodal Logistics Center Overlay District. And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades in a portion of city plan numbers 32S, 33S, 40S, 47S, 48S, and 53S by placing on the city plan Francis Harper Drive from Past Yunk Avenue to Penrose Avenue, Pollack Street from South 26th Street to Francis Harper Drive, Schuylkill Avenue from Past Yunk Avenue extending northwesterly and northeasternly to a cul-de-sac, and Forton Way from Vera Avenue extending southwesterly to a cul-de-sac. And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades in a portion of city plan numbers 32S, 33S, 40S, 46S, 47S, and 53S by relocating the existing curb lines and house lines along the southern side of West Past Yunk Avenue and its intersection with South 28th Street and Past Yunk Avenue Service Road, also known as Frontage Road, along both sides of Past Yunk Avenue Service Road, also known as Frontage Road, and its intersections with Francis Harper Drive along the western side of 26th Street and center median of South 26th Street and its intersections with Pollack Street and Penrose Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of Francis Harper Drive from Past Yunk Avenue to Penrose Avenue, Pollack Street from South 26th Street to Francis Harper Drive, Schuylkill Avenue from Past Yunk Avenue extending northwesterly and northeasternly to a cul-de-sac, and Forton Way from Vera Avenue extending southwesterly to a cul-de-sac. And an ordinance authorizing the striking from city plan numbers 40S, 47S, and 48S, and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes located along the former Hart Ramp Street west of 26th Street and extending westwardly therefrom to the Schuylkill River, all under certain terms and conditions.
Hey, Councilman Johnson, did you want to be recognized?
Yeah, thank you, Council President, I just want to acknowledge Councilman Jones, Heenan, Green, Dom, Scola, Gilmore, Richardson, Gem, and Thomas for supporting legislation that I introduced to regulate which we call ghost guns. Most of you may or may not know that we've seen an increase around the issue of illegal gun trafficking as relates to ghost guns, and ghost guns are pretty much a process where individual can buy a gun kit and put a gun together by buying various parts, and you can buy those parts from different stores and put a gun together, but the issue is there are no serial numbers attached to that gun, therefore they aren't federally regulated, and so I've been working on this for about a year, but I'm kind of held up so our Attorney General Josh Appero can engage in a lawsuit around this issue, making sure that, again, we're not infringing on anyone's rights, but at the end of the day, if you talk to our district attorney like Kradner, if you talk to our police commissioner Daniel Outlaw, we have seen the increase of ghost guns being used in the current murders and shootings that we're seeing. These guns look like toys at the end of the day, and we want to do all the things that we can possible to make sure that we're keeping guns out of the hands of those who are taking the lives out of our, from our young people, and so just want to go on the record and just note, and thank everyone for the support, and look forward to addressing this issue in our, in our hearing in the near future. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Green offers two bills and one resolution entitled an ordinance constituting the 25th supplemental ordinance to the restated general water and wastewater revenue bond ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds. And an ordinance constituting the 24th supplemental ordinance, the restated general water and wastewater revenue bond ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds.
They will be referred to committee.
And a resolution recognizing college possible Philadelphia and its, and its first cohort of college graduates.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers two bills and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain provisions of chapter 14, 500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the HVO, Everford Village Overlay District, and amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wallace Street, 36th Street, Mount Vernon Street, and 37th Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain provisions of chapter 14, 500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the TSO, 30th Street Overlay District, by revising certain provisions of chapter 14, 702, entitled floor area height and housing unit density bonuses, and amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, 30th Street, Walnut Street, and 31st Lower Level Street.
For the committee.
And a resolution formally apologizing on behalf of the Council of the City of Philadelphia for the decisions and events preceding the leading to the devastation that occurred on May 13, 1985, and establishing an annual day of observation, reflection, and recommitment on May 13, in the spirit of moving forward reconciliation, justice, and harmony for all people of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you, that will be on next week's council.
Councilman Thomas offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code, including section 12, 102, Definitions, section 12, 201, Duties of the Police Department, section 12, 203, Emergency and Trial Regulations, and section 12, 1401, Traffic Violation Notices, Parking Violation Notices, to establish policies regarding the noticing requirements by the Police Department for certain Commonwealth Vehicle Code violations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I first want to, like so many other folks on this body, acknowledge what happened earlier this week and communicate my thoughts and prayers to the Wallace family as well as that community who had to endure that unfortunate situation. Outside of that, I just want folks to know that this is a bill that we have been working on for months now, thank you to my colleagues who took time over the last, I'll say over last 10 days to two weeks to listen to this bill, to listen to what it is that we're trying to do. I also want to communicate, this is a bill that is not anti-anybody. I'm born and raised in the City of Philadelphia, I come from a family of service, my brother right now is in the military, served 10 years plus as a sergeant, my sister is a veteran, my uncle Aaron Thomas is one of the Edison 64, and I have another uncle who also served in the military as well too, so, you know, my family comes from a space of service, and when we introduce a bill like this, what we're, what we're forcing everyone to do is just have a tough conversation on what it is that we need to do as it relates to how our communities are policed. Right now, based on data that we have around the bill, 90%, around 90% of traffic violation are for trivial matters and have nothing to do with public safety. We are spending a lot of man-hours as it relates to policing in the City of Philadelphia on traffic. Now, I'm the Chair of Streets and Services as well, so I know that we have some congestion issues, we have issues with hit and runs, and so by no means am I saying that we will not monitor traffic and ensure traffic violation are handled in an effective way, but what we are saying is this, we have to rethink, reconsider, and continue to brainstorm the relationships between police and neighborhoods, we want to put ourselves in a position where we're keeping everyone safe, and we want to put police in a position where they could focus on issues related to crime. We have a lot of problems in our municipality, and as a member of council at large, I try my best to address the issues that I have the capacity to do so, and so I am very proud to introduce the bill, but I'm also very open to dialogue and conversation around what these simple minor traffic stops look like, and most importantly, the implementation of the bill as it relates to how the violations will be communicated and served to the citizens of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman, that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating the Northeast High School Field Hockey Team on their successful 2019 season and conference 10-0 record in the Philadelphia Public League.
Thank you, that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neil offers one bill entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Byberry Road, Woodhaven Road, and the Percessin Creek and adjacent land south of Franklin Mills Circle.
For the committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services and the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the intersection of mental health, disability, and police encounters, and to develop strategies and best practices for non-lethal de-escalation, crisis intervention, and restraint of individuals experiencing mental or emotional distress.
Thank you, that will be on today's calendar.
Mr. President, would you like to be recognized?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do want to also take a moment here and acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., and thank him for being so open to work together on this issue, and also Councilman Kenyatta Johnson as a co-sponsor as well, and I just wanted to state, you know, as we are all aware at this point, the tragic death of Walter Wallace Jr. on Monday night shouldn't have happened. Walter was experiencing a mental health emergency, and his family requested help for that emergency. Walter deserved help and should be here with us today, because I think one thing that we can all agree on and we all recognize now is that this was very preventable. While the Police Department may already have crisis intervention training and protocols for handling behavioral health crises, police officers are not crisis intervention specialists, they are not social workers or medics, police are often the first respond to mental health crisis, and they shouldn't be. This resolution calls for hearings that examine the intersection of mental health, disability, and police encounters because they are interconnected. Statistics say that between one quarter and one half of all people having a lethal outcome when dealing with the police were experiencing a mental health crisis. This is a call to develop strategies for crisis intervention and non-lethal de-escalation. The city must do more to develop alternative responses to mental health and disability emergencies that do not involve interactions with the police. And I just wanted to really, once again, thank all of my colleagues, I know that we've all, you know, expressed our profound sorrow for this loss to the family, but as we move forward, now the question becomes, how do we make sure that this thing, which was preventable, never ever ever happens again? So thank you, Mr. President, thank you colleagues.
Thank you, Council Lady. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions.
Sorry, Council President, can I be recognized one more time, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, just. Thank you, Council President, I just want to, for the record, thank the co-sponsors of the bill, Councilmember Jones, Gilmore Richardson, Kionne Sanchez, Brooks, Johnson, Gauthier, Gem, Parker, and also communicate that Councilman Heenan was the heir as a co-sponsor for the bill, I just wanted to communicate that for the record, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. All right, our next order of business is reports from committees, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee of the Whole reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole to which is referred bill number 200369 and titled an ordinance authorizing city officials to file articles of incorporation to establish a nonprofit corporation that shall be called the Philadelphia Poverty Action Fund for the purpose of reducing poverty in Philadelphia, and bill number 200419 and titled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, the Director of Finance. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, I returns attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 200369 and 200419.
Second. Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200369 and 200419, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both, ayes have it, these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, in addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, they are numbers 200579, 200580, 200581, 200582, 200583, 200584, and 200585, all of the bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. It's been moved, seconded that the.
Council, Council President?
Yeah.
Could we return to the motion on the bills that are being called up for the consent agenda? We didn't complete that motion.
Counsel, uh, okay.
We were on the, if Councilwoman Parker could go back to the page preceding that page that we were on, or that we were just on.
Decker, will I have to, Decker, can I just repeat it now? Mr. President, can you hear me well?
I can hear you, I'm not sure.
Yes, 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 Councilwoman, the Council President recognized you for a motion on the, on the bill, on the second reading council, you can just start.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Numbers two zero zero four one seven, two zero zero one five nine, two zero zero two five two, two zero zero one five eight, two zero zero one six three, two zero zero one seven nine, two zero zero one eight five, two zero zero one eight six, two zero zero one eight seven, two zero zero two zero nine, two zero zero two one zero, two zero zero two one one, two zero zero two five nine, two zero zero three seven three, two zero zero three eight eight, two zero zero four one five, two zero zero four two two, two zero zero four two three, two zero zero four nine five, two zero zero four nine six, two zero zero four nine nine, two zero zero five zero zero, two zero zero five one seven, and two zero zero five three eight.
It has been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to prevent the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
I have an objection to Bill Number two zero zero five eight, five three eight.
Same thing here, Councilman O'Neil.
Okay. So that, that, that consent, uh, that objection to the use of those particular bills on a consent agenda requires that they be removed off the consent agenda and moved to the regular agenda, uh, without debate. So, Mr. Decker, can you make that notation?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll do that.
Thank you. And the chair now again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers two zero zero five seven nine, two zero zero five eight zero, two zero zero five eight one, two zero zero five eight two, two zero zero five eight three, two zero zero five eight four, two zero zero five eight five, and two zero zero five three eight that was just removed from the consent agenda. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. So, uh, we will now move to our public comment session, but before we proceed with the consideration of the public comment session, we will take around a ten-minute-
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
This is Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions. I need to be excused for important business.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we, uh, proceed with the public comment, uh, we will now take a brief, uh, say ten-minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect with the speakers, uh, we have for today's meeting. We'll be back shortly. Thank you.
Hello?
Good morning. How are you?
Uh, Michael Decker wasn't sure if you wanted to do a roll call before we get started.
Thank you very much. At this particular time, it looks like we're waiting on the Council President.
Thank you. We're going to get started. Thank you for your patience. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment session. It will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for the possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five six eight six three four oh six by five P M. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation that you added to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Um, we, under ideal circumstances, uh, we will have three minutes, but today, um, because of the time limit will be imposed, we will have two minutes today in our council session because of the volume of individuals testifying. Um, in order to be fair, for all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. Once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this by the simple ring of a bell. Uh, once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserve the right, uh, to limit, uh, repetitious comment, uh, but today, um, based on our earlier conversation, uh, we've been able to eliminate that. Uh, so all individuals on the line will be allowed to testify on a particular issue. Um, one last note, uh, please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are continuing to be in recorded. I will now ask that the Chief clerk, please read the name of our first speaker.
Ajowa Asamoah.
Good morning, Council President Darrell Clark, Councilwoman Sherelle Parker, and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Ajowa B. Asamoah, and as a proud two-time graduate of Temple University, an alum of Temple University's African American Studies Department, and as the racial equity champion and political strategist who developed the legislative strategy for the Crown Act movement on behalf of the Crown Coalition, co-founded by Dove, it is my honor to join you again in full support of Bill Number two zero zero two five two. There is a longstanding history and problematic practice of racial discrimination based on hair in the United States. There have been countless cases where black people have been discriminated against for wearing natural hair and/or protective styles, including but not limited to braids, locks, twists, vantage knots, afros, et cetera. This prevalent form of discrimination includes being fired, tasked by promotions, and even having unemployment, excuse me, even having employment offers rescinded. It impacts, impacts the upward mobility of individuals and families, and it has been the reason far too many children have missed school and had negative educational experiences. As I think about the work we've done at the local, state, and federal levels, I think about the dynamic student fraternity in Louisiana who was sent home in tears because she wore beautiful braids that were deemed a violation of school. I think about DeAndre Arnold in Texas.
Hello?
Have a time?
Hello?
I'm sorry. I think about DeAndre Arnold in Texas, who was told he could not participate in his high school graduation ceremony with his friends due to his lack of display of cultural pride. I think about representing, uh, the students across the world who I think, along with other people, was that the bell?
Uh, you have thirty seconds if you can wrap up in thirty seconds.
I am, I am so sorry. I, there's-
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the African aesthetic is beautiful and it must be lifted and valued. The issue of narrow beauty standards in America continue to perpetuate unfair scrutiny, injustice, and discrimination in workplaces and schools against black people, and it warrants the legislative fix. Councilwoman Parker has proposed and championed Bill Number two zero zero two five two will ensure protection against discrimination based on hairstyles by extending statutory protection to the hair, to hair texture and protective style. I applaud you, Councilwoman, uh, Parker for championing the Crown Act and on behalf of the entire Crown Coalition, including over seventy civil rights and civic engagement focused organizations, and colleagues Kelly, Orlena, Marcy, A.C., and Melanie, we thank you and encourage you all to support this bill. And I'll submit, uh, this written testimony.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Phil Lord.
Uh, can you hear me? I'm not sure I was on. Um, thank you, Council Pres-
Morning.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning. And to the council members, my name is Phil Lord, and I'm the Executive Director of the Tenant Union Representative Tent- Network, which is TURN. I'm testifying in favor of Bill two hundred one five nine, which authorizes non-attorney representation before the Philadelphia Housing Commission. Um, as you may know, TURN has, um, uh, sees thousands of tenants each year, its workshops, individual counseling, subsidy programs are all involved, and we have plenty of opportunities to help people with the Fair Housing Commission who are trying to navigate its protection. In that context, we find that it's very helpful to have people who are non-attorneys be available to represent people at these hearings. Um, this is a different kind of, um, uh, representation, not the technical legal courtroom representation, it's an administrative hearing. So the persons that we have from our office and other non-lawyer representatives are really down there to make sure the tenant's case is heard, that all the issues are raised, and that the documents are in order. There's no cross-examination by these people, or, um, um, witness representation or, uh, evidence rules being applied. It's really an informal hearing, it's pretty relaxed, and makes sure all the facts get out. The Fair Housing Commission has become more and more important over the past years. Thank you, thanks to the leadership of Ruland Down for the many ordinances passed by this city council. And so we feel it's critical, uh, that, that tenants who go before the commission have the opportunity to be heard well. And there aren't enough lawyers in this city, or certainly not enough lawyers who qualify the landlord tenant issue to be able to do this. We need non-lawyers to be available and to help people out, and this assistance is normal. Uh, I want to also comment that it's really important that we don't compound one pandemic with another. We are really concerned about the courts opening up and homelessness becoming more rampant as a result, and overcrowding resulting, and the ultimate result being an increase of deaths from the pandemic. So we hope the council will take a look at not only this bill, but the bill in the next few weeks that will go into court, to court, to court, to make sure people have more protection from this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Tameya Cipio Smith.
Hello, I'm, I'm here. Um, let's see, Tameya Cipio Smith.
I'm at work. As soon as I was trying to give you my call.
I'm calling regarding specifically, um, excuse me, Resolution two zero zero five eight zero. Um, I, I'm here to provide testimony today. Is it still up for review, consideration?
Yes, you're, you're here. We're, before we vote on the, the bill that you referenced, uh, we would have to hear your public comments. So please proceed with your public comment. And you had two-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Tameya Cipio Smith. I'm the Education Policy Director at PCCY Public Youth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm here today in support of Resolution two zero zero five eight zero. I'm calling on city council to show its support for House Bill five twenty-six, which calls for ending the use of taxpayer funds to pay for cyber charter education when local school districts offer their own full-time cyber charter programs. Supporting this bill is fiscally responsible and a common sense option for Philadelphia. By championing this bill, sponsored by the Republican House Education Chair Kurt Sunny, city council is taking a step back from the biting ultra-polarized rhetoric that currently plagues our political system. Instead, by showing its support for this Republican bill, the council is moving toward a bipartisan solution to fix a significant part of Pennsylvania's badly broken charter school law, cyber charters, an overhaul that is nearly twenty years past due. Like ninety percent of the state districts, the school district of Philadelphia offers an in-house cyber program for students. Unlike the other school districts, Philadelphia spent a whopping one hundred and sixty million dollars in cyber charter tuition during the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and thanks to a jump in enrollment by more than one thousand two hundred students- And thanks to a jump in enrollment by more than 1,200 students this year alone, that amount is expected to grow by $15 million. That's an unacceptable jump in a year when school districts across the state are expected to face millions of dollars of increases in mandates, shortfalls, and in local revenue and significant costs related to COVID. For the amount of money school district is pouring into cyber charters, one would expect a strong return on investment. However, nothing could be farther from the truth. Cyber charters have never delivered on that expectation. Nearly nineteen thousand students attending cyber charters are performing worse on state assessments than students attending the school district of Philadelphia. For instance, if you just look at math performance, eighty-three percent of the students are attending cyber charter schools, where the overall performance is worse than that of students in the Philadelphia school district. While abysmal, this is unsurprising considering the Credo Study from Stanford University last year found that Pennsylvania students attending cyber charters had learning gaps equal to one hundred and six less days in reading and one hundred and eighteen fewer days in math compared to their peers in traditional public schools. Philadelphia students deserve better. Again, we are not adding, asking City Council to pass a law. We're calling on Harrisburg to do that. The state will have to implement processes that address the transitional needs of students and ensure the continuity of their education. We are asking City Council to tell Harrisburg that the current cyber charter law and the way that we are funding cybers is not working for students or taxpayers. But enough is enough. Continuing to mandate the district pays, that the district pays for failing schools while the school district of Philadelphia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, your time is up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your testimony.
The next speaker is Deborah Weiner.
Hello, my name is Deborah Weiner, City Council President Clark, and members of council. I am here to speak about cyber charter enrollment and Resolution 200580, which would endorse House Bill 526 and end the use of taxpayer funds to pay for cyber charter schools when school districts offer their own full-time cyber school programs. As you know, cyber charter enrollment in the Commonwealth has surged. Estimates are that sixty-two thousand students are enrolled in cyber charters this fall. These charters are authorized not by local school districts, but by the Commonwealth because they serve students from all over Pennsylvania. Philadelphia has enrolled more than twelve hundred and twenty new cyber charter students as of October twenty-one, an increase that could cost the district around $15 million. In addition to the more than $106 million it is already spending on cyber charter tuition. Given the abysmal performance and the fact that more than ninety percent of Pennsylvania's school districts offer a cyber program of their own, it is a waste of taxpayer dollars to continue to support this failing system that has horrific academic results. I urge City Council to call on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt House Bill 526 and end the use of taxpayer funds for cyber charter education when local school districts offer their own full-time cyber school programs. The bill would require parents or guardians living in a district that offers a full-time cyber charter education program to pay tuition and fees for their student if they enroll their student in a cyber charter school. Procedures, of course, will need to be developed to address the current cyber charter student tuition payments. Adopting the bill would be a much-needed reform and ease the burden on local school districts and taxpayers. The bill has bipartisan support as introduced by the Republican Chair of the House Education Committee, Representative Kurt Sonny. Thank you.
Can you kind of wrap it up? When the second bell rings, your, your time is up, if you want to.
I'm done.
You're done? Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Mr. Decker.
The next speaker is Sharon Ward.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on Resolution 200580 today. Thank you, Council President Clark and council members. I'm here representing LEARN, the Leaders in Educational Accountability and Reform Network, to support City Council's resolution in support of Kurt Sonny's bill. The bill is a win-win situation for parents and for taxpayers. It preserves choice for families, but it also improves accountability and will begin to reduce the excessive costs that school districts are paying for cyber charter education. There is a national debate about whether cyber charter, whether the cyber charter model works for online education, and there's a national consensus that it really is very problematic. In 2015, four national charter school organizations worried about the rapid growth and poor performance of the sectors issued a call for states to strengthen their cyber charter laws. Unfortunately, no state did, with the exception of Oklahoma, where there was a scandal involving falsified enrollment data, falsified enrollment in that state's cyber school. Kurt Sonny provides a good balance. It ensures that students have options. It reduces the cost for the district, and it allows the, the school districts to improve accountability. More than half of school districts offer cyber charter programs during the pandemic. They all operated at one-third to one-half the cost of cyber charter schools. And in fact, school district-operated programs are improving. Districts have a, have a capacity, they have an interest in the students, they're able to provide them support, and they follow the students. The biggest challenge with our cyber charter schools is their exit ramp. We appreciate City Council, and thank you very much for, we hope you'll consider this, this resolution, which will help to drive the debate in Harrisburg.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Mujahid Muhammad.
How are you doing today?
Before we, before we start, this is for the record, you will hear two bells. The first bell, you have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks, and the second bell, we're going to ask you to conclude your remark for everybody that's on the call. Thank you. Please proceed with your testimony and state your name for the record, sir.
Okay. How are you doing today? I'm Mujahid Muhammad. I'm a senior at Paul Robinson High School, and I am testifying in favor of Bill 200579.
That it? All right.
Mr. Gordon is the best principal in the United States right now. During my time, during my short time at Paul Robinson, he has made it like a family environment. He is the one principal I know that is always there for you and with whatever he wants, with whatever he needs for his kids. He helped me become a better person in life, helped me stay on track over the years, helped all his students stay on track over the years. He is the only principal I know that will stand outside and wait for all his kids to get in the building and greet them with handshakes and smiles. I'm finished.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kiara Prince.
Hi.
Good morning. Just please state your name. Proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kiara Prince, and I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 200579. I'm a, I am an alumni of Paul Robinson. I graduated in 2019. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Gordon is one of the most kind and genuine principals I've ever had the opportunity to work with. When applying, when applying for Warner Hill College, I was not accepted immediately. I was crushed, but Mr. Gordon wouldn't allow me to give up. He gave me other options and alternatives. With perseverance and determination, because of the instruction Mr. Gordon gave me, I kept going to Warner Hill, and now I am a sophomore there. And a major part of this part of my life is because of Mr. Gordon, so I would like to thank him. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lyrica Wise.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lyrica Wise, and I'm testing in favor of Bill 200579. Now, coming to Paul Robinson, I had no guidance. I lost my dad eighth grade years, so I went into high school with my head in all the wrong places. Looking back now, I wouldn't consider myself your average honest student. Because honestly, through all of the hardships and sacrifices I had to make to be one step closer to success that I want, I would have to think, I would have to give all my thanks to Principal Gordon. I've honestly been down a lot of rocky roads. I've been kicked out of three schools, and one of them was an alternative school. But everybody I've met has always turned and has always used that against me. But Gordon has helped to show me that there is power in everything. It's even power in the faults that we have every single day. And because of this, I've been involved in my community. I've been involved in everything. In this community, so many kids like me feel unheard because we've never met people who tell us our voice and our story matters. And that, and it breaks my heart because there's so many people that have potential, but it is lost because reality is success is inconvenient. He doesn't care about any of the hardships or the sacrifice we had to make. It's just messy, but people want to know things like this, and nobody says it because we have no voice. Gordon helped show me my voice, and he helped show me the way I know I'm going to do something because of him. Thank you all for hearing everything I have to say. If you're listening, I love you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you all for having me.
The next speaker is Michael Cho.
Hi, Council Member Darrell Clark, President and Council Members. I am President of the Korean American Chamber of Commerce for Philadelphia. And just to give you a background, the, the prior riots, the Korean community was especially hit hard. They, they had about $19 million in damages, and seventy-five, at least seventy-five businesses were affected. I oppose Council Bill Number 20538, which would strip law enforcement of non-lethal tools like tear gas during public demonstrations. The Korean Chamber believes that such an ordinance will have a psychological and chilling effect on the police officers, further handicapping their ability to prevent the widespread looting and destruction of property and small businesses that has plagued the city. This ordinance will not make conditions safer for demonstrators, residents, or business owners. As non-lethal options are taken off the table, police officers may be placed in difficult predicaments that could lead to the deployment of more lethal options. Furthermore, as the police become less engaged to stop widespread looting and destruction of property, business owners would be forced to take up their own arms in defense of their businesses and livelihoods. This could lead to potentially dangerous and violent interactions for both business owners and looters and vandals. The Korean Chamber, the Korean Chamber wants Korean businesses to be safe from such destruction of their businesses and of themselves. They would like to see their businesses and communities protected by well-trained police officers with all necessary tools at their disposal, rather than officers fearful of retribution or a potential lawsuit. During these unprecedented and volatile times, we must uphold law and order and protect the small businesses, citizens, and protesters from harm. Small businesses fear that this bill would adversely impact police department activities while attempting to protect our communities during First Amendment-related riots, protests, and looting. We are taxpayers. Please give us security that we can live safely and work in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Mary Ann Powderd.
Hello?
Good morning.
Hello?
Good morning.
Hi.
Just state your name and proceed with your testimony, please.
Oh, okay. Did, did you say moot the phone?
No, no, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Oh, okay. This came from Percocie, so I wasn't even going to answer it.
Oh, okay.
That's what the number showed up.
This is the City Council of Philadelphia, and you.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's why I answered it that way because it's nuisance calls, I thought. My name is Mary Ann Tippard.
Go ahead with your testimony, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Did you want to testify at the public hearing? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead with your testimony. You have two minutes.
Okay. My concern is for protection for our police. The rioters are not peaceful protesters, and peaceful protests can really turn quickly. What happens then? In the riots this week, the police were told not to make arrests just to disperse them. But what message does that send? Grab what you can and scatter? Licensed to destroy and steal? There will be no consequences. This is not an answer and sends a very bad message. You can do anything you want in Philly and get away with it. Riots actually had U-Haul trucks and were filling them with stolen merchandise. That's unbelievable. There's recent footage of rioters chasing police down the street and throwing rocks at them and other things. It is absurd that it has come to this in Philly. It's frightening to see. And can you see the message this sends to the rest of the United States and the world about how we no longer have protection? Our police are running from the thugs because the city does not want the police to protect themselves, nor the city, the citizens, rather, of Philadelphia? Tear gas or rubber bullets should definitely have been used in this incident. Why didn't the city allow this? And why did they allow the destruction? Another problem with not allowing the use of rubber bullets and tear gas is what constitutes peaceful? So many incidents in media coverage said mostly peaceful, with the complete mayhem and the burning cars and buildings in the background. I think the first rock thrown or the first fire started ended the connotation of peaceful. Media is not allowed to report on what the citizens go through in these times of unrest. It's frightening. I'm seventy-four years old and feel I no longer have police protection. Philly is setting itself up for citizens having to defend themselves and their property. Is that what you want? In the last riots, the mayor called individuals trying to protect their property vigilantes. But what were they supposed to do? What were their options? Violence should be nipped in the bud. By allowing this to happen, if those do these times of unrest, you should get a handle on things in the beginning. If you wait, it's too late. Parameters should be set as to what is not allowed in a peaceful protest. Let it be known there will be consequences, if not adhered to, but then followed through on that. I believe that not much was done to the rioters after the protest early this year. I know that most charges were dropped. As for the tear gas used on the Vine Street Expressway, I believe that was justified. A state trooper was alone in his car, and protesters began mocking it. Numerous orders from SWAT teams to disperse were ignored. Tear gas was then used. It was correct. The big mistake was to not apologize for it.
Ma'am, if you can kind of conclude your.
Pardon me?
You can conclude.
I can't hear you.
I said, can you please conclude your remarks? Your, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony, though. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Bode.
Thank you very much. This is Dr. Elizabeth Bode. I am a pediatrician and resident in West Philadelphia. I'm here to testify in favor of Bill Number 20053. This testimony in favor is for the less lethal devices. And I'm testifying both as a community member and a pediatrician who responded to children who were sleeping in their homes and were tear gassed in my neighborhood, requiring extensive medical treatment. In addition, I'm speaking on behalf of multiple medical societies throughout the country that have given their scientifically and data-based recommendations that tear gas and rubber bullets should not be used because of the risk of long-term health risks and because they can be used to injure permanently people who are not directly targeted by them. I would really recommend passing this bill based on the data that we have and not just on people's feelings or opinions. I think if we look at the data, both from the medical side and from the sociology side, that says that when tear gas and rubber bullets are used, there tends to be an escalation of force, not a de-escalation, as some believe. Then it really shows that we have no benefit from using tear gas and rubber bullets, either from a health perspective nor from a use of force perspective. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Roman Zukov.
Sorry, for a second, I had to unmute the call. Yes, guys. Hello, calling on behalf of the Bill 20538 of the use of non-lethal.
Just state your name. Just state your name for the.
The first name is Roman. The first name is Roman. Last name is Zukov. Roman Zukov.
Thank you. Go ahead. Please proceed.
Uh, yes, I'm, uh, calling on a statement, uh, regarding the Bill Number Two Hundred Five Three Eight, uh, of the use of non-lethal, uh, weapons. Uh, so pretty much as of today, uh, we have a situation with Walter Wallace. And, uh, the reason, one of the reasons he, uh, was shot because police was under-equipped with, uh, lack, lack of the tasers, that's non-lethal as well. And as of right now, police is, uh, have the only option left as a lethal weapon. So any situation, uh, that is going on on the street right now can easily turn from the nine violence into the violence. And all it takes is just one break or one person to break the law. If police have no options to react, the only options they will have, that would be a lethal weapon. That will create more tensions and, uh, it will create more problems in the future. So instead of preventing a crime, now we're gonna create more crimes. And just by passing this bill, which is already in Constitution, is the First Amendment, now we're only gonna demoralize already demoralized police that cannot perform their duties. So please, uh, like on behalf of the Somerton Community, far, far northeast Philadelphia, this bill shall not be passed due to more damages and further, uh, because all of those weapons, uh, non-lethal weapons, uh, shall be used in prevention to help the community. Uh, do appreciate your time and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Sharon Hart.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Hart, the President of the Korean Association, Korean American Association of Greater Philadelphia. It's my honor to have opportunity to speak, uh, comments this morning. My testimony is towards to Bill Number Two Zero Zero Five Three Eight. This past summer, seventy-five Korean-American-owned businesses were looted, vandalized, and burned down. Since then, some of them have completely shut down, and many of them are still trying to recover from the damage. This week, I received the reports of seventeen Korean-American-owned businesses being looted, and it's only increasing every night. We fully support peaceful protest and fully support our police officers. Unfortunately, individuals and gruesome individuals have taken the opportunity to use a peaceful protest as an excuse to riot and loot, uh, small businesses. The Korean-American community has been severely impacted by these acts as the small businesses were destroyed along with the livelihood of the small business owners. While we understand why Bill Number Two Zero Zero Five Three Eight may have been, uh, proposed, we are concerned about the lack of clarity on what constitutes First Amendment activities, how and through what process the police department or the city of Philadelphia will define such an activity, and how the police will respond if such an activity turns into something else. We're concerned that the bill will take away the tools the police need to protect our citizens and the small businesses, communities during this time of, uh, great unrest. We'd like also ask the city of Philadelphia and the members of council to acknowledge that while many peace protests are held in, in center city, much of the rioting and the looting is happening in other parts of the city. The vast majority of the small businesses in our community that have been impacted by rioting, the looting this year have been not been in city, only center city. We continue to ask for help and then additional police presence in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
That's the last speaker we have on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. Um, I wanted to say that Resolution Number Two Zero Zero Five Eight Zero, uh, will be held until, uh, later session, uh, in order to clear up some misconceptions about the resolution.
And for the folks watching, is that the cyber, the cyber's article?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure people understood. All right, thank you. Um, Councilman Heenan, did you want to be recognized before we start moving on to vote? Councilman Heenan? Okay, I'm waiting till he gets back. Okay, um, I know he indicated he wanted to be recognized. Ah, okay, um. Okay, um, that concludes our public comment session. Uh, we are now gonna consider, uh, today's bill consent agenda. I would ask, uh, Mr. Decker, to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. I think we already did that. Now, the clerk will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four One Seven entitled an ordinance demanding Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Building Construction and Occupancy Code, and Title Fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled planning. By adding disclosure requirements with respect to certain applications, permits, and notices. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Five Nine entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter Nine Eight Hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled landlord and tenant to clarify and amend applicable procedures pertaining to the Fair Housing Commission and to provide for the adoption of regulations. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two Five Two entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter Nine Eleven Hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled fair practices ordinance protection against unlawful discrimination to clarify that unlawful discrimination includes discrimination based on characteristics such as hair texture and hairstyles. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Five Eight entitled an ordinance authorizing our properties to construct and maintain a proposed exterior building ramp and steps at fourteen oh one through fifteen Arch Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Six Three entitled an ordinance establishing no truck parking regulations on Bellfield Avenue between North Twentieth Street and Worcester Street, and O'Gon's Avenue between West Somerville Avenue and Lindley Avenue. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Seven Nine entitled an ordinance amending Section Nine Two Thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled farmers markets by adding a permissible location on O'Gon's Avenue. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two One Eight Five entitled an ordinance amending Section Twelve Seven Oh One of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes, to authorize bicycle lanes in the vicinity of Passy Oak Avenue from Sixty-first Street to Asington Avenue, and Asington Avenue from Passy Oak Avenue to Bartram Avenue, and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Eight Six entitled an ordinance amending Section Twelve Seven Oh One of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize bicycle lanes in the Third Council District in the vicinity of South Forty-Ninth Street from Pasqual Avenue to Gray's Avenue, Gray's Avenue from Forty-Ninth Street to Lindbergh Boulevard, and Lindbergh Boulevard from Gray's Avenue to Elmwood Avenue, and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero One Eight Seven entitled an ordinance establishing a no parking regulation on the east side of North Thirty-first Street between Jefferson Street and West Thompson Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two Zero Nine entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Green Street and North Eleventh Street, North Thirteenth Street and Mount Vernon Street, Allen Street and Germantown Avenue, Wallace Street and North Twelfth Street, Lawrence Street and Poplin Street, Brandywine Street and North Tenth Street, Burke Street and Gerard Avenue. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two One Zero entitled an ordinance authorizing Walnut Street Theater Corporation to construct, own, and maintain a proposed building overhanging encroachment at eight fifteen through twenty-three Walnut Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two One One entitled an ordinance establishing no truck parking regulations on Fifty-eight Hundred Musgrove Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Two Five Nine entitled an ordinance authorizing the construction, installation, ownership, ownership, use, and maintenance of an owner, of an open-air sidewalk cafe at nine oh one through twenty-five North Delaware Avenue. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Three Seven Three entitled an ordinance authorizing Gojo Incorporated to, to install, own, and maintain a proposed sidewalk cafe at forty-five thirty-six to forty Baltimore Avenue. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Three Eight Eight entitled an ordinance authorizing RPG Hamilton, Tara Radner Property Group, to construct, own, and maintain both existing and proposed pedestrian-scale street lights at four forty North Fifteenth Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four One Five entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Talbot Street from Torresdale Avenue eastbound to the end of the roadway. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four Two Two entitled an ordinance authorizing Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation, also known as PC DC, to own and maintain a pedestrian plaza along the west meridian of Tenth Street and Vine Street intersection on the structure carrying traffic above Interstate Six Seventy-Six. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four Two Three entitled an ordinance authorizing Keystone Property Group to construct, own, and maintain a proposed exterior building ramp at One Hundred South Independence Mall West. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four Nine Five entitled an ordinance regulating the direction movement of traffic on certain portions of Ludlow Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four Nine Six entitled an ordinance amending Section Eleven One Oh Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled curb cuts to define curb cut and add prohibitions on curb cuts in order to facilitate the construction of transit platforms. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Four Nine Nine entitled an ordinance authorizing Mark Capriati to install, own, and maintain a proposed sidewalk cafe at Three Ten West Master Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Five Zero Zero entitled an ordinance removing existing parking meters and regulations as well as establishing an authorized vehicles-only regulation in front of seventy-three oh six Castor Avenue and both sides of seven, of the seventy-three hundred block of Elgin Street. And Bill Number Two Zero Zero Five One Seven entitled an ordinance amending Section Five of the ordinance, Bill Number One Eight Zero Six Nine Two, approved October thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing wood deck and ramp encroachment at thirteen thirty-eight to thirteen forty-four Rising Sun Avenue by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, on the role in being called, on being called, each councilor shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills with the members voting aye, and those bills with the member voting nay. Decker?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dom?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson is voting aye on all bills. Councilwoman Green?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Giff?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Heenan?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman O'Neil?
Aye on all, all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Kinnern Sanchez?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Squilla?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members haven't voted any affirmative for each of the bills. The bills on the consent agenda are passed. Uh, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of Resolution Number Two Zero Zero Five Seventy-Nine?
A resolution honoring and commending Richard M. Gordon the Fourth for being named the Two Thousand Twenty-One National Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and for his exemplary leadership as the head of Paul Robeson High School for Human Services.
Chair Recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, it was a joy to hear from young people at this time to talk about a leader and a educational, uh, hero for them, um, especially as our city is dealing with so much challenges and pain. Um, it is with great honor that I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Decker?
Thank you. It's been moved in private. Second, that the resolution be adopted, all in favor of the case, I say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number Two Zero Zero Five Eight Oh.
Uh, that one's being held, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault. Thank you. Um, Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolutions Number Two Zero Zero Five Eighty-One.
A resolution affirming all Philadelphians' First Amendment rights to protest and peaceful assembly, particularly in response to the upcoming presidential election.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for the motion.
Thank you, Council President. Before I make a ma- motion, I would like to say a few words about this resolution.
Please.
I want to speak briefly about the intersecting challenges facing the people of Philadelphia and the people of the entire country this week. Last week, I introduced a resolution affirming Philadelphians' right to protest and assembly. As you know, the right to peacefully protest is at the heart of our First Amendment rights and the foundation of our democracy. This Tuesday, our democracy as we know it is on the line. The occupant of the White House is already contesting the accuracy and fairness of the election. Pennsylvania is a key swing state. On a number of occasions, the President has stated that he will not commit to a peaceful transfer of power if he loses. It is likely we will not know the results of the election on Tuesday night and for some time after. In addition to the right to vote and freedom of speech, the right to protest is the main tool that our constituents have to ensure that every vote is counted and the results of the elections are upheld. And we have a reason to suspect that right, that this right is under threat. We have already seen evidence that our current President's administration seeks to punish those who express this dissent. A few weeks ago, my friend and community litter, leader Nancy Nguyen was arrested for peacefully protesting outside the home of the head of Immigrations and Customs Enforcement Agency, or ICE. The protest was in response to the twenty-four immigrants that died in ICE custody last year, including several children. Nikki, Nancy was taken from her home in Philadelphia from her two young children and detained for twenty-two hours on a littering charge. Remember, this is the same federal agency that has recently, has been recently exposed for conducting mass hysterectomies on vulnerable immigrant women. Now, the city we live in is different from the one that we lived in just a week ago when I first introduced this resolution. Walter Wallace Jr., a twenty-four-year-old mentally ill black man, a husband, a father, a twin, was killed in cold blood by the police in the streets of West Philadelphia. In many ways, this feels like a repeating nightmare. Once again, a black man was killed by police when he didn't have to die. Once again, our city has taken to the streets in grief and rage to demand justice and accountability. And once again, we are seeing the pain of generations of oppression, disenfranchisement, and violence spill out and bubble over. And once again, we are seeing protesters being excessively brutalized at the hands of police. So I just want to take a moment to connect all those dots here and be very clear. The White House has already threatened to send federal law enforcement agents to Philadelphia in the wake of Walter Wallace's protests. And we can expect these protests will intersect with the demonstrations related to the election. The President has a track record of attacking his opponents and has stated that he will not willingly give up his powers. Nonviolent resistance is critical to protecting our democracy, and therefore, we must affirm the right to peaceful protest and assembly. I want to thank you, take, make a, take a special thank you to the nine councilmembers who co-sponsored this resolution. Councilmembers Gartier, Gimm, Gilmore Richardson, Green, Heenan, Johnson, Dom, Parker, and Thomas. We are in a historic moment. As a black woman, I would not be here today, would not even be able to vote if it weren't for my family members, my ancestors. if it weren't for my family members, my ancestors, and my elders rising up in protest against these oppressive systems. To end, no one messes with Philly. We are grieving, we are hurting, but we are strong. I stand with my colleagues, Councilmember Gartier, in demanding a fair and swift investigation into the death of Judge Walter Wallace and supporting the family through this difficult time. I will overcome, we will overcome, this difficult moment and continue to seek justice and protect our democracy together. Thank you so much, Council President, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Mighty second, Council Lady.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's been moved in probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero five eighty two.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Department of Licenses and Inspections David H. on his retirement from the city of Philadelphia and recognizing his exceptional leadership and accomplishments over a distinguished career in public service.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero five eighty three.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Frankfurt High School baseball team on their successful two thousand nineteen season and conference eleven to three record in the Philadelphia Public League.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption as of the resolution as we continue to honor a champion of the week every week.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero five eighty four.
A resolution recognizing October two thousand twenty as Filipino American History Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, resolution number two zero zero five eight five.
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Russian language newspaper Philadelphia News on the occasion of its twenty fifth anniversary in print media.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Well, now. Use. No number. Two zero zero five thirty eight. Am I correct, Mr. Decker?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number two zero zero five thirty eight. Is there an echo, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
I sound okay? Could we get the members to put their mics on? I see a few, a few members have their mics still open. Thank you. Bill number two zero zero five three eight is an ordinance amending title ten of the Philadelphia Code to create a new chapter ten twenty five hundred entitled less lethal devices to regulate the use of less lethal devices in specific situations.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. Um, I, I, Councilman Owen and Heenan, did you guys want to speak?
Council President, I did want to make a comment. I see that the bill sponsor would like to make a brief comment as well.
Okay.
Uh, Council President, this is, uh, Councilman Bobby Heenan. Um, I'd like to be recorded. I have to step away for council business. Uh, but I would like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions that remain on the calendar for today. And, uh, bill number two zero zero five three eight, I'd like to be recorded as no.
Okay, Councilman, that was taken off the, um, consent agenda, so that that bill is up now. So.
Okay, so I, I, I'll stick around for this one.
Yeah.
But, uh, any other bills that are on the voting agenda, I would like to be recording, uh, be recorded as voting aye.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Gimm, did you want to be recognized now?
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. Walter Wallace, we say his name and we honor his memory. Our city is in mourning and hurting. When our city council committee initially embarked on this effort to talk about what happened back in May and June, we did so with the belief that it was important to talk about truth telling, about accountability, to center the voices of our residents if we were to have a chance and a process at repairing trust and of re- reimagining policing and public safety. The individuals who testified over, uh, seven hours and two hearings did so at great personal pain, but with an unrelenting belief that things had to change. Their words are the foundations of this bill. Their pain is unacceptable and their courage calls us to the task of building a more just Philadelphia. I want to express gratitude to our city council public safety committee for the deep compassion, partnership, thoughtfulness, and rigor which they brought to the hearings and plannings around this bill and to the public listening session. I especially want to thank our committee chair Curtis Jones Jr. for being a wonderful partner and a thoughtful leader. And if I could just take a special moment of gratitude to express, uh, to express my heart to Councilmember Jamie Gartier, um, who was also deeply devoted to this effort and, um, whom we have been working very closely with together through this, uh, most recent tragedy. I want to thank all the testifiers who took the time, uh, to speak. Their words hold us accountable and in particular, I'm reminded of the words of Mr. Jaunty who said, "I'm black in America and I still fear for my children." The courage and words of ordinary Philadelphians who demanded more of us. This bill is supported by the administration. I do want to take just a brief moment to clear up some misconceptions about the bill. This bill does not unilaterally remove less lethal devices such as tear gas, rubber bullets, pepper spray, or the like from the police department's arsenal. It clearly states that they may not be used against any individual engaged in First Amendment protected activities, not First Amendment related, First Amendment protected. I have seen misleading quotes that somehow denying the police department the use of these weapons uh, will force them to escalate and use actual lethal weapons. This concept is not only ludicrous, but it is an insult to professionals within the police department, including the civil affairs unit and others who understand and utilize crowd control, management, and de-escalation tactics. I've been in plenty of demonstrations over two decades of organizing that did not result in the kind of violence and chaos we witnessed in May and June of two thousand twenty. This bill calls upon the police department to set aside its weaponry when people march and protest. Tear gas, rubber bullets, and the like had not been deployed in this manner for decades and we have mannered all manner of protest over the last twenty years. It does challenge the police department and our city leadership to engage in a rigorous exercise over what constitutes First Amendment activity. And for that, I am grateful for Councilmember Brooks' resolution that clarifies that. The spring, the response from the city to this spring's Black Lives Matter protest undid years of collaboration and work. This bill is a first step towards reaffirming that pu- that public protest is not at odds with public safety and responses to public protest should not compromise public safety, plain and simple. As we look for the days ahead, we will be, we will be called to task once again. But this bill is a first step to clearly say Black Lives Matter. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman O, did, did you or did you not want to speak on this?
Yes, I would like to speak on the bill.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Uh, thank you very much, Council President. Um, I will be voting no on the bill. Um, people have a First Amendment right to free speech and that includes the right to protest. And, and in our country today, there are so many people who are protesting. They have very, very different views and there are many frustrated and angry people. And they have every right to march, to rally, to protest. However, that ends when they break the law. They cannot break the law and violate other people's rights. And we are coming into a discussion now about what is a peaceful protest? Because I feel it's peaceful, it should be peaceful. That's a very subjective view and what that does is to create a selective enforcement problem. And that's what we have seen. Uh, one of the things that has occurred, um, is that people have gone out into the middle of the highway and blocked other people's travel. They may be blocking four or five cars, but that can set back for two or three miles. And every one of those people in those vehicles have something to do. And their opinions may be absolutely in support of the protesters, but that's not the point. The protesters went out into the highway, blocked the traffic indiscriminately of anyone's needs and concerns, and that's illegal and unlawful. And they were told to leave and they did not leave. Now, I don't tell them to leave. I'm a councilman. We have city workers who are charged with that responsibility and they are law enforcement. And it is their job to go onto the highways for the safety of those protesters, for the safety of the people in the vehicles, and to ensure that no people in the vehicle get out of their cars or ran, run into the protesters or pull out their guns. That's why the police are there and they have a level of tools. And one of the tools that they used after it was approved by the managing director and his uh, a body of executives in conjunction with the police commanders and the commanders on the street was to deploy tear gas. And from what I've seen, and I was not there, they deployed a canister that caused the group of people to move in another direction, but then they stopped. And they would not get off the highway. And then the police deployed more canisters. So they were warned and told and they were given every opportunity to leave the highway and they did not. And that deployment of tear gas is for the safety of them, the police, and every motorist that is on that highway. Now, the result of which is that a deputy police commissioner demoted himself. Managing director resigned, the mayor apologized, and, and one of the police officers is being, I believe, prosecuted. That is a chilling effect. I'm not sa- we're going to find out what should or should not have happened. But what I'm saying is that how does, how, how do the police respond when they are being told by our city to go out and quell riots, violent protests? And by the way, I live near fifty second street. That place was lit up. Fires, violence, assaults, cars being smashed into each other. And so the police have a tool to disperse large groups of people, hundreds, thousands of people, and that's called tear gas. It is a non-lethal force if you get out of the way of the floating gas. And yes, it will float into people's homes. Better their homes have tear gas than be set on fire. It, there's no perfect situation when people will not comply. The idea that someone can come to your home, stand on your porch with fifty people and protest you. You may feel frightened, you may feel afraid, you may call the police. They have no right to violate the law. Criminal press pass is a violation and the reasons of violation, it makes people want to react. And we do not want people reacting. This chilling effect, this endangerment of police and others, listen, I agree a hundred percent and, and, and I have not met one police officer who did not agree about the issues invol- involving George Floyd. We all saw it on the video and the need for reforms. But taking away tools and then saying that we get to pick and choose which activity is a First Amendment activity. What, what about a group that we disagree with occupying the highway? What about their protest? Do we, do we use tear gas on them because they won't leave? If people perceive that the police will not do their job because they are told not to respond, not to arrest, and we have looters shooting looters, people take matters into their own hands as they are doing now with skyrocketing gun purchases. The largest demographic of people purchasing guns are African-American women. Why is that? People do not feel safe. They will defend themselves if they continue to believe that the police are being hampered, being blamed to the extent the police will not respond. And what I'm saying is, one, while there is not much wrong with this bill on its face, it does raise the question, what is a peaceful activity? What is a First Amendment activity? Who's making that decision? And ultimately, what happens when the police choose not to respond where the people wrongfully, rightfully believe they have to take matters into their own hands? Anyway, that is the reason I will vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Council President, not the point of information for the sponsor.
Thank you, Council. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Um, Councilman Gimm, when was the last time the Philadelphia Police Department used rubber bullets or tear gas in the city of Philadelphia?
Um, again, in a, in a First Amendment demonstration, it was our understanding that it had not been deployed since early two thousand.
Okay, and what was the nature when it was used in early two thousand?
I think it was the Republican National Convention.
Okay, and then prior to that time period?
On a peaceful demonstration, we are still requesting that information from the, uh, from the PPD.
But based on your knowledge and perspective, has it been a significant period of time since that's been used before?
It has been a significant period of time since between May and June of two thousand twenty to the time that it was previously used. The police department has been able to manage all manner of civil demonstration and protest without resorting to tear gas. And, you know, as I said, I don't, I think that Councilman O might not have been able to hear all of the testimony that was presented by, uh, individuals, but it was very clear that there was not, uh, information that is traditionally given to individuals, um, who are protesting about when tear gas was going to be deployed and their rights to depart the scene.
Okay, so, um, we give the police the discretion to use various tools at their disposal and based on your information, they've only used tear gas and or rubber bullets, I think, um, two thousand um, and then this past spring and then probably a long time before that. Is that correct?
Cur- well, I can only speak to two thousand. I cannot speak to what happened before then. But, uh, certainly in the last twenty plus years, uh, this is not in a tactic that's been used in, in a civil demonstration.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
President, point of information?
Councilman Joe?
Um, I was a part of, actually chaired the, um, public safety hearing on this munitions bill. And what it boils down to is that peaceful protest is respected by all. I don't think a person in this, uh, chamber, virtual chamber, is against that. Um, I think what is in question is when these levels of force should appropriately be used. And clearly, um, in the case of, of the I seventy six issue, based on the testimony I heard, clearly in, uh, West Philadelphia, which has been a, uh, historic place where residents have been, um, literally, uh, taken up arms against, um, these were, these were inappropriate. These were inappropriate. We heard dozens of families in terror from little children to senior citizens not understanding why their government. why their government was moving against them. And I know of not only just the testimony, but people who felt threatened that just li, the only mistake they made was living in southwest Philadelphia. They weren't a part of the protest, but yet they were a part of the assault. And we have to, we attempted to get clarification because one of my good colleagues wanted clarification. I'm gonna put him on, on blast a little bit. Councilman Scola, a thoughtful member, wanted to know what levels where there were appropriate use of these kinds of munitions. And we were about to get that clarification when, um, the Wallace shooting occurred and the commissioner had to cancel. So, um, I, I want it, I want it harder to use force against citizens, to be honest. I want it more thoughtful and that there be more steps. Because, I mean, there's a lot of political feelings that sometimes spill over the public policy and the implementation of that policy. And if you don't believe me, all you have to do is look on Facebook and see where we had a report where there were police officers sharing their true feelings about how they feel about citizens. So, um, with all due respect, and you know, when, when you say that disrespect is common, I am going to vote, uh, in favor of restraint. And we will, we will carefully evaluate when those levels of force should, should be implemented. But we need to be more thoughtful, not less. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Time out. Okay.
Mr. President? Mr. President? I'm sorry, this is Councilwoman Bass. I was wondering if, if, um, Councilwoman Gimm could respond to Councilman O's, uh, commentary earlier? If we just get a response to some of those points?
Councilwoman Gimm, you choose to respond.
There were a lot of them. Was there one in particular, Councilwoman Bass, that you wanted me to respond to? I think my initial statements tried to address some of the misconceptions about the bill, and in particular, recognizing the anguish of, um, many of our commercial corridors and others. Um, these are separate issues. They are not related. There is, this bill allows the police department to craft a policy that allows it to define how First Amendment activity will be treated. But when it is identified as First Amendment activity, tear gas, rubber bullets, less lethal weaponry will not be permitted against those who choose to take to, to the streets and march for a better tomorrow. Um, we tried to make that very clear in the bill. I think it became very clear in the testimony. Clearly, I think as we are seeing, um, across our city today, we will be called to task. But we should be. We should be asked to hold ourselves to the highest of standards. We know what happens when we don't.
This is, this is probably one of the hardest votes, I'm just gonna say, the hardest votes that I've ever taken in council. I think that, um, you know, for, a, a, as a member who is on the ground and in the neighborhood, and I see the effects of, um, the, the psychological effects of, um, bad interactions with the police on people from our community, I see it, I see it every single day. And it's not a one and done. It's a, it's a, it's a lasting interaction. So when you have a negative interaction with the police department, with a police officer, um, you know, it's a problem that carries on, particularly for African-American men, it'll carry on for a lifetime. And so obviously, we do want to, um, be less lethal, uh, when, when it comes to, um, you know, those interactions. But at the same time, I, you know, I'm just thinking about, um, what Councilwoman O was referencing back when 676, back in the spring with the protest, um, and, um, you know, blocking traffic. And those weren't the guys from the neighborhood who are having those same negative interactions. Those, those weren't, um, the folks from the neighborhood who have, um, had, uh, problematic relationships with the police. Um, but these were the folks who were, you know, tear gas was used. So I guess my overall question is, if we don't, i, i, let's say your bill, this bill had passed, um, last year or prior to 676, then what would have been the response or the ability from the police department, um, if this bill was already in place? Can you give us some sense of that?
I think it would have been what we have right now, which is there's a full moratorium on tear gas, rubber bullets being deployed in a First Amendment situation. And so the police.
Right, so what would the police, what options would I, they would have had, do you think?
What they're using right now. And what they have, what they used in the last 20 years. Um, which has not been to wildly shoot rubber bullets into a crowd or tear gas, uh, an entire residential neighborhood in West Philadelphia, or to, uh, pull down, uh, you know, the bandanas of people kneeling on 676 and spray them directly in the eyes at point-blank range with pepper spray, um, along with the other types of, of violence. We are a city that is hurting and is in pain. There's no question about all of that. And I understand that, you know, we have a large city to serve, including our police officers. But we need to figure out how to rein it in. And the violence and the, uh, the levels of, of reaction that we're seeing with members of our own, uh, police force, um, is something that we have to address. And there, there are plenty of, you know, there's 150 lawsuits about it. Uh, there are, uh, you know, there's, there's outreach, and there are bills that we have passed, uh, that are very similar to this, including the chokehold ban, which again, leaves it within the police department to craft the policy. City council is not authorizing, is not itself author, authoring or writing a policy for the police department. It's simply mandating that one exists.
If I could intervene quickly?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
I'm sorry, thank you. Um, I was there on 52nd Street. I don't know if Councilmember O was there and if he, um, participated in hearing all of the stories that were shared during the listening session. Um, and I, from my perception, being there on the corridor, it went from no planning and no response. So it went from cops, um, literally ducking behind their cars to, um, tanks and tear gas, right? And I think that if we take, um, if we make it as hard as possible to use this type of response, particularly in a residential neighborhood, it will force us to plan better. We don't need to, uh, it ramped, it went from zero to 60, right? Um, and then, once you're at war in a neighborhood, that's where you are. You're at war in a neighborhood. Um, and, and, and people are gonna be affected who, you know, have, have no participation in what's happening. And so, um, we absolutely need to, um, make it as difficult as possible to use these type of, um, weapons and tools in the areas where people live.
I'm, I'm not saying that, that at all. Well, let me, let me just clarify. I'm not saying at all that, you know, we should be pulling out tear gas or rubber bullets every five minutes. That, that's not at all where I am. I guess what I'm saying is I, I, I wanna know if, um, you know, if things get out of hand, um, you know, what is the expected response? But I understand Councilwoman Gimm's response, which is that what we are legislating here, um, is not, uh, we, we are not telling them, uh, what to do, but just basically to re-craft the policy, to, to take another look, come up with something better, uh, something that's more appropriate in the 21st century. So that's what I'm taking, um, your conversation, uh, the, the comments that you just made to me. And my last question to the councilwoman is, have we spoken with Commissioner Outlaw on that, or?
Yes, Commissioner Outlaw testified and submitted official testimony. It is backed by the administration, um, and that was made clear. Um, to be, you know, Commissioner Outlaw came forward on the, uh, on the continuation of the hearings and the listening session to hear from individuals. To be clear, the police department does not have a current policy. Um, they issued and established a moratorium, and what we're doing is requiring that a policy exists. But as you said, we are not writing that policy. Um, we are requiring that in this time, more than ever, when we have, you know, federal officials involved here in our city, when the head of the Department of Homeland Security and the ICE director come here to announce that they're gonna do immigration raids on, on our city, you know, less than two weeks before, when, uh, the US attorney here is, uh, you know, talking about charging protesters who are released without, uh, charges, uh, you know, a few days earlier, that we have to make clear that First Amendment activity is protected and that there are rules of engagement around it. There are none, and there need to be them.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Good, okay, good. Time's up.
All right, Council President, I, I will have a comment to make, just wrapping things up. Um, at first, I wasn't on 76 because I wouldn't be on 76 blocking the highway. And I'm not out rioting or looting or any of those things. I do live in a neighborhood that traditionally has had a lot of, uh, crime and violence, and I've had my share of interaction, uh, negative interaction with the police when I was younger. And I was always thankful for the police because there is far worse in my neighborhood than, um, those interactions, and there are far better interactions and so many people who need the police, uh, because they are not able to fend for themselves. Um, the, the issue that I see is that trying to place the burden on police to craft a way to deal with non-compliant lawbreakers, be they doctors, nurses, teachers, professors, whoever they are, they're breaking the law, and they are not complying. And the police are being asked to come up with every which way to gently kind of deal with the situation. They're not built that way. Uh, you'd have to pay them a lot more. Br, higher education, training, what, here's what they do. They put on a uniform so you know who they are, they go out when nobody can go out, and they enforce the law. That's simple as that. And they say, you can't be on a highway, you can't be rioting, you can't loot, you can't do this, you have to leave. And that's the end of the story. It should just be that. But when people refuse, when they get on their knees in the middle of the highway and say, go ahead, pick me up, lift me, I'm not going anywhere, you get a police response. I'm not saying it can't be done better.
Council President, point of information.
What, what, what's there? Councilman O, you, you finishing up?
Clear, Councilman O.
Councilman O? Councilman O?
Putting that information, I'm waiting.
Clear, Councilman O. You, you can proceed with your speech, sir.
Okay, well, listen. What, what I'm, what I'm saying is that sitting in City Hall as legislators, we can come up with many different shades of what people should be doing, but it's not really what they do. And, um, it, you know, people have asked, well, why don't they send a social worker? The call is man with a gun and a knife. Social workers are not showing up until that place has been cleared as safe. I mean, if you wanna send a social worker and a psychiatrist in there, man with a gun, man with, be my guest, but they're not going. They wait until the police say, okay, it's safe and it's clear. We can do better, I agree. And, 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 and I understand, you know, the frustration and, and certainly the loss of life is tragic. I, I however am concerned that placing blame on a, a police officers that are serving the public in a very difficult job and, and saying they should have better ways of doing things, that's challenging for me.
Chair, Chair, uh, recognizes Councilman, I believe, Johnson, and then Councilwoman Gimm, I think, have another response.
And Council, Council, and Council President, Councilman Thomas as well.
I'm sorry, actually, Councilman Thomas was, uh, right after Councilman Johnson, I'm saying.
Thank, thank you, Council President. I, I was just, um, sitting here, and I'm one of the sponsors of the bill, and, um, you know, I support, um, our law enforcement officials. I've always have been as chair of special committee on gun violence and addressing the issues of building a relationship between our police as well as members of our community, particularly African-American, um, young men. Uh, however, just listening to some of the comments, uh, from my colleague, I begin to think about their history of my people as black people, African-American people, and how, when you make comments saying that, well, we should just comply, right? Or if not, you know, they can take a law enforcement approach, I think about how the late great John, Congressman John Lewis was on the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and he was marching for civil rights. And you had some officers, you had some, some police that had some very, very aggressive tactics because they didn't comply, fighting and protesting for what they believed, which was right. Uh, but we have countless, countless times in our history as African-American, black people, right? We didn't so-called comply, right? And the response was a very, very aggressive law enforcement approach that we have been seeing. And so, um, I just wanted to note, just for the record, we understand what peaceful protesting has been. Uh, we come from a long history, particularly as black people, as black people in particular, and other people have joined us as quote-unquote allies, but as black people in particular, we have always been on the front line protesting peacefully. And in times when we decided to continue to take a stand, we have been met with a very, very aggressive response from those who are monitoring the situation. And so, I don't think what we're asking is anything out of the ordinary, uh, but I do take offense in terms of, um, how I think that you're painting this lightly. And, and I honestly think you're playing to a law enforcement, you know, tough-on-protesters approach as relates to this particular issue. And I'm just gonna be upfront with you.
Sure.
Because when I think about everything you just, you just mentioned, I think about the history of those who have protested, that allowed me to become a black councilperson, a former black state representative, and to be able to do the things I'm doing right now. And that came only through protesting, no matter how you look at it. And this is America, to be quite frank. We, we aren't the first ones who actually started doing the type of protest that you have been seeing. I mean, let's, let's look at the Boston Tea Party. Nobody told, you know, them, well, wait a minute, well, hold up, they have to address it this way, or not, you know? So I just wanted to put that out there, because you might wanna preface your approach and how you're addressing this, um, you know, General Councilman, because at the end of the day, you're coming across, I don't even wanna put the language out there, because I know you as a person, but you treading on some, 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 some very, very.
That, that's fine, Councilman, we're gonna disagree on that because.
I gotta support, uh, the General Lady's, uh, resolution, and I think it's incumbent upon, um, the officers in the city of Philadelphia to think, at least think about thoroughly how they address this issue, um, regarding peaceful protesting, First Amendment rights. We under, she's not saying you can't use rubber bullets at all, you can never, ever use tear gas at all, that's not her approach, but they do need to be mindful. I like, I like my other council, um, member just said also, like, they didn't have a plan. And they said it for the record, they didn't have a plan, and that's why things got out of hand. And if not, they would not be apologized. Because you don't apologize when you're doing the right thing. And so I just wanted to put that out there, um, for the record.
All right, I know what you're saying, I know you as a person, however, we're gonna have a disagreement on that. And bringing up the civil rights movement and, and Martin Luther King, and obviously, you know, a very different circumstance where people need to go out and protest, and protest sometimes violently is different than, uh, the point that I made. But I'll leave it at that.
So, so you said.
Hold on, hold on, timeout, timeout.
Life being taken by.
Council Johnson.
For eight minutes and 45 seconds, wasn't worthy of a protest. Wasn't worthy of shutting down I-76.
Hey, guys, can we get a little order? Can you like?
Yes, sir, Council President.
In the council session. So you gotta like, you know, ask to be, you know? Thank you. I think Councilman Thomas was next.
Thank you, Council President, and, um, you know, I, I hate to beli-
Thank you, Council President. And, you know, I hate to belabor a point and I, I bet that we'll go even longer with speeches of the majority. I'm committed to no speech of the majority, but I have to at least comment on this. I, I was there on 52nd Street. And I think what becomes frustrating, not just as a member of council, but just as a person born and raised in the city of Philadelphia, is when people communicate their lived experiences and we tell them that that didn't happen. I was on 52nd Street, not on the side that Jamie was. But where I was the night that it took place, and I even FaceTimed the Council President while it was happening, we seen no plan and we seen people eventually use force that we felt like was unnecessary on a particular group of people who were peaceful. They were dancing. They maybe used some language that I wouldn't want to hear in front of my son. But literally right around the corner from them, there were people who were doing the opposite. They were looting. They were breaking in stores. They were doing things that were criminal and police did nothing to them while tear gassing and roughing up the people who were peacefully protesting. I had a kid who went out the other night when the unfortunate situation happened with Mr. Wallace. He contacts me in the middle of the night to tell me he had been assaulted by a police officer. I cannot tell him that that didn't happen. So I think the one thing we have to do is first recognize that we have to appreciate people's lived experiences. And then when we talk about a system that's broken and make recommendations for that system to be fixed, people can't take it personal. Look, I was a teacher and I've been a teacher for a very long time. When people talk about how our schools are broken or what we need to change as it relates to our climate, culture, and curriculum, I never hear Dr. Hyde saying we're anti-teachers or we're anti-education or we're anti-children. We have a lot of problems as a municipality. And like Councilman Johnson, I, I do know you as well, Councilmember O., and I've worked closely with you, but I think the rhetoric is important. When we make recommendations around institutions that do not work for us, and we all know they do not work for us, it's important that people who make those recommendations are not deemed anti-anything. The last thing I'm going to say is this. We're all taxpayer dollars. We're all taxpayers. These are our tax dollars that we're responsible for. And every single year, the city of Philadelphia, which we're fiscally responsible for managing, spends anywhere from twenty-five to fifty million dollars dealing with lawsuits in our police department. I can almost assure you that number's going to go up significantly. So in the middle of us facing a huge budget deficit, we're also going to have to consider all the money we're going to have to pay out over the next couple of years to protesters who were peacefully out there communicating their right to have their voice be heard. And now we're going to have to pay for the abuse that took place. So again, I'm not, this is not a bastion session on anybody, but I just wanted us to think critically when we're having these conversations about, around institutions that we know don't work. If it don't work, let's brainstorm, what can we do to make it better? And again, it's always amazing that whenever we talk about anything with policing, it's either pro or against. I'm not against police. I'm born and raised in this city. I went to the schools in this city. So you naturally know people who are police. I can't be against my college basketball teammate who decided to go into law enforcement. That's not what this is. But at the same time, he, along with a lot of other people, represented an institution that has traditionally suppressed people of color. And if we are going to move from those type of, of implementation in these institutions, we have to have tough conversations that can end with us agreeing to disagree. But we can't deem somebody a certain way because they don't see it how we see. Thank you, Council President, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe Councilman Green.
Yeah, Council President, I, I wasn't going to continue to comment because I think we're going back and forth on this. But when I, I'm just looking at the language of the First Amendment. And we're talking with the right of people to peaceably to assemble. And my understanding from the sponsors legislation, that we want to make sure that people have the right to peaceably assemble and not have tear gas or rubber bullets used against them when they're exercising their First Amendment right, which is in the Constitution. If people are breaking the law, then the police have the ability and the responsibility to take the steps they need to do. I, I, there was a lot of commentary that's been made earlier that I don't want to get into because that could take us down a, a longer path in this conversation. So I'll, I'll just reserve my comments for another time. But this, to me, is something that should be something that we should be able to support as a body. And I'm speaking as someone who has worked as an Assistant District Attorney, has worked as an Assistant Deputy Attorney General at the state level, has an uncle who's my godfather as a police officer on one side, and another uncle as a police officer. So I've grown up with law enforcement around me. I have fraternity brothers who are members of law enforcement, friends who are members of law enforcement. And from my perspective, they do the job that they do at the best that they can. And based on the information that Councilmember Gim has provided, and from my own eyes, we haven't seen tear gas or rubber bullets used in the city of Philadelphia in a long time, which demonstrates that police can handle situations without using these type of tactics in our city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I think that concludes our comments. So with that, Mr. Decker, why don't you read the title of the bill one more time? It's been a minute since we did that.
Mr. Bill Member. Two zero zero five three eight, entitled An Ordinance Amendment Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code to Create a New Chapter 102500 Entitled Less Lethal Devices, to Regulate the Use of Less Lethal Devices in Specific Situations.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson is voting aye. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Nay.
Councilman Johnson.
In the spirit of John Lewis, the late Greek Congressman, aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Nay.
Councilman O'Neil.
Nay.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squillo.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fourteen and the nays are three. Majority of all members present have been voting in for the bill passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services and the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the intersection of mental health, disability, and police encounters, and to develop strategies and best practices for non-lethal de-escalation, crisis intervention, and restraint of individuals experiencing mental or emotional distress introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage, Councilor, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That completes our calendar for today. Prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record at this time that we use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? All right. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? Awesome. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones. In a minute.
Mr. President.
Councilman, I see it, I see it now. Yeah, I got multiple, multiple notifications over here. Councilwoman, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier. I think you wanted to speak.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, everyone. Back in May, eleven of my council colleagues and I released a joint apology on the thirty-fifth anniversary of the MOVE bombing. And today, I introduce a resolution that would serve as a formal apology on behalf of City Council for this tragic event. The resolution would also establish May thirteenth as an annual day of observation, reflection, and recommitment in Philadelphia to honor those we lost that day in nineteen eighty-five. I thank the ten council members who co-sponsored this resolution. I initially planned to speak on this once the resolution came up for a final vote. But given everything that's happened over the last couple of days and even today during session, I feel compelled to share some thoughts. On May thirteenth, nineteen eighty-five, the city of Philadelphia carried out a brutal attack on its own citizens. As part of an effort to forcefully evict MOVE, city officials made the unconscionable decision to drop a bomb on their home in Cobb's Creek. This is among the only times in our nation's history that a police force has bombed its own people. That explosion caused a fire, which authorities allowed to burn. They didn't call in firefighters until nearly an hour later. By that time, it was already out of control. Eleven people, five children, and six adults lost their lives in the MOVE house. And as a result, the fire, as a result of the fire, two surrounding city blocks were burned to the ground, destroying sixty-one homes and leaving two hundred fifty Philadelphians homeless. To this day, not a single person has faced criminal consequences or been held accountable in any meaningful way for these brutal acts. We can draw a straight line from the unresolved pain and trauma of that day to Walter Wallace Jr.'s killing earlier this week in the very same neighborhood. Because what's lying under the surface here is a lack of recognition for the humanity of black people from law enforcement. In that way, the lack of reconciliation between the police and our communities from the MOVE bombing is still having repercussions thirty-five years later. Let's talk about reconciliation would mean in practice because it's a word that gets used a lot, but we don't often take the time to actually talk about what it calls for. It would mean we're picking different people to be police. They would have different skill sets and attitudes, and they would engage differently in our neighborhoods and with our young people. One very brief example. At a march hosted by black clergy on Tuesday protesting Walter Wallace's death, I saw multiple officers wearing masks with the Blue Lives Matter flag. They wouldn't be doing that in our neighborhoods during this time if they had respect for our lives. Their presence in our communities would feel different. White communities tend to like police and feel they're there to keep them safe. Black people overall don't have the same experience. They are often fearful of police. And frankly, like we saw with the officers who killed Walter Wallace, sometimes they seem scared of us too. If we had gone through the hard work of reconciliation after the MOVE bombing, maybe those officers would have seen in Walter Wallace someone in need of a helping hand instead of a threat. They would have seen him and realized he was someone's son, father, husband, neighbor. The May thirteenth day of reconciliation that we're proposing with this resolution is a symbol we hope can lead to the actual work, the conversations, the relationship building, and the listening that should have been happening in Philly and across the country for decades, but never has. And the formal apology we're issuing through this resolution serves as recognition for the pain and the trauma that these events have brought upon the Cobb's Creek community, black people, and our city as a whole. So let us make this a part of our living responsibility to those who have died at the hands of the state. Let May thirteenth be a day of penitence and commitment to working towards racial justice. And let us achieve justice for Walter Wallace Jr. and for all of the undeserving black men and women before him who have died prematurely at the hands of police. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief, but I just had to state for the record that I am proud that we passed the resolution honoring Principal Richard Gordon of the Paul Robeson High School. And now I know that the resolution acknowledged him for being the National Association of Secondary Schools' Principal of the Year for twenty twenty-one. He's also received an award, Distinguished Service to Education in twenty twenty. But, Mr. President, for the record, and, you know, I, I want all of my HBCU lovers to just know this for a fact, that Principal Richard Gordon at the Paul Robeson High School is a very proud graduate of the Lincoln University, the first historically black degree-granting institution of higher learning in the United States. So for all of my mighty lions and lionesses who are watching right now, many of us have already shared our congratulations with him. But just make sure you let him know that this resolution passed today and he has made our fine institution extremely proud. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, sir.
This past week, we have passed a milestone that as a city, we should be ashamed of. And that's more than four hundred-plus murders here in the city of Philadelphia. It's a constant reminder that there's much work that needs to be done. There are four hundred families who have lost their loved ones to gun violence. And so I want to remind individuals that on this upcoming Tuesday, on ballot, have ballot question number two, which will create the office of victim advocate, to support the four hundred families who have lost their loved ones to gun violence, their mother, their father, their brother, their sister, their aunt, their uncle, their grandfather, their grandmother, and supporting them with addressing the issue of trauma and grief support services, and making sure at the end of the day that they have a voice through advocacy, public policy, and most importantly, as you have the table, as we support those who have lost their loved ones to gun violence. And as we move toward the end of the year, we must still remain diligent in coming up with different solutions and thinking outside the box to address the distanceless gun violence that has taken over our city. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And we must remain vigilant. That is clearly this ongoing sustain, a stain on the city of Philadelphia and our inability to get a handle on this. But we're going to keep on trying until we get a resolution, and particularly dealing with those underlying issues that cause to have that intersection with the criminal justice system and all the other challenging things we do. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for making the statement regarding the milestone that we should not have reached in this city in reference to the violence that's happening in our city. I want to thank council members Bass and Jones for their joint resolution for hearings on the committees, which I co-sponsor. I'm also a member of both of those committees. Look forward to that conversation. This has been a very challenging week here in the city of Philadelphia, challenging in a lot of ways in reference to what has happened in our city, but also brought light to some of the challenges that parents that have children with special needs deal with. When I reflect to the video in the tragic death of Walter Wallace, it makes me think of the conversations that parents that have children with special needs need to have. All of us who are African-American, African-American fathers and mothers know about the talk. But some of us that have a child with a special need, that deal with mental health issues and behavioral health issues, are not able to have that talk with their child. And as you heard in my comments earlier, I've had a long connection with various family members who have been part of the police and public safety. But at the same point, when I'm not here as a member of council, I'm not with my son, and he's out with others, or even simply maybe in a car with my wife, and for some reason. and for some reason, um they may be pulled over. Um having that talk that so many of us as African-American have with our children, that is a challenge when you have a son that has a learning or physical difference. Um and so when I thought about what happened this week, it made me reflect about some of the own actions that we have taken as a family. Some of you may have heard that, you know, in my son's bookbag, he actually has a card that states his name, his phone number, our numbers um in reference to who to contact. And when I think about even in my wife's vehicle, uh and these are things I normally don't share with people, but we actually have a card or notice that talks about my son, talks about he's autistic and that he's non-threatening, and he may be dealing with an issue in an episode. And uh this has just been a very tragic week, and it it just brings to mention uh the resources that we need to provide in reference to mental health. We need to mu- be much more knowledgeable of the issues of mental health in our city. And then also in our clothes with the names of some young people you may not have heard of who lost their life um that had a learning difference um due to a police interaction. Lyndon Cameron, Arnaldo, Rio Soto, and more recently, Elijah McLean. All young men um that lost their life uh who had a learning difference. And so we've got to provide more resources to deal with this issue and be more cognizant of the differences that we have in our city and our communities. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and majority. And with that, I now recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Um, Mr. President, if you will indulge me, I did put it in chat. I wanted to be recognized. Um but very briefly, Tuesday is election day. For those of you who have not exercised your right to vote yet, you still have another opportunity to do so. All of the debate you heard today um is just debate if we don't exercise our right to vote from the top emanating down ballot. We really need to um recognize that our vote is our voice, and we better say something. We better make it loud and clear from Washington DC to City Hall that we are woke. Um in that, I want you not to forget the ballot questions. Um one of them is a borrowing measure. The other one is creating the Office of Victims uh Services. And then question number three is to establish a citizens' police oversight committee. Say it again, a citizens' police oversight com- commission. And in doing so, we can paint on a blank canvas what we want modern policing to look like. And we should do so together. We should hear all voices at the table. Because when, as uh Blondell Reynolds Brown used to say, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu. With that, uh Mr. President, I move.
Hey, Council Councilman, um Council, I think Councilman Dom. Councilman Dom, did you have a quick comment?
Very quick. I just wanted to say, thank you, Council President. Councilmember Green keep sharing that story. It's really uh very important for all of us to hear. And I think it's 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 uh very touching. I want to just thank you and your wife for all you're doing and uh appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Dom. Councilman Jones, sorry for the interruption.
That's quite all right. It was worth it. Thank you, uh Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty, at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty, ten AM. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Again, if you have not nailed your ballot in, I just want to say to whoever's listening, give serious consideration to dropping it off at a early voting center or a drop box as opposed to putting it in the mail. Because there's a strong possibility that it will not reach the city commissioner's office in time. Thank you. So give some thought to that to everyone. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. President.
Thank you. God bless you.